Places with nuclear plants and you can chuckle all you want, okay? I'd let you have your say and I didn't laugh at yours, so don't laugh at mine. Thank you. Someday down the road, you won't have to be able to have coal burning plants anymore. The federal government will not allow it forever and ever, and the same with nuclear plants. And at that point in time, you're gonna have to ask yourself, what are we gonna do for electricity? The other thing I wanna say is that when I drive around, even in Winfield Township, and you look at all of the electrical wires that are strung all over the place because the power comes from clear out by Newago or other places, you look at all that wire and I can't imagine how anybody would that had never been in this county before, or in the United States before, or in a civilized country before, could drive around and think that that's beautiful, haven't it? As far as I'm concerned, I think the wind towers are aesthetically beautiful. And again, that's a personal opinion, but we're in favor of it and I just wanted to stand up and say that.
My name is Mitchell Potrax and I live in Winfield Township. If this was purely about giving people electricity in their homes, you can solve that with, you know, home solar panels and small little tiny wind turbines on a home and make a house 100% efficient without destroying all this garbage. You know, I hear you chuckling too. No one likes looking at electrical wires either. It's something we just deal with to have electricity. But there's better solutions than stupid 700-foot tall wind turbines. I'll call it, they're stupid. Secondly, the solar ordinance that you guys tried passing got referendum with 288 signatures on petition. Any guess how many people are gonna sign the one for wind? Because it's gonna be darn near double that easily. And before you guys move this forward, what is put in front of you today, maybe think about it, all those names on the petition for just solar, maybe it'd be a good idea to go talk to all those people face to face instead of hiding up here behind a lawyer or whatever, not answering questions. Just think about every last signature on there, because it's gonna be at least double when it comes for wind. So just stop acting like it's not gonna happen. We will stop this in its tracks, no matter what. So start listening, start making adjustments, make a strong ordinance, not this weak garbage that you have right now. Thank you.
From Winfield, I'm Don Puskas. I did some research on your wind generators. Seems to me there's a whole lot of conflict of interest with you people, those that are connected. And as far as the wind generators, if you've done the research that I did, you know that it's not cost effective.
Steve Cole, Winfield Township. First off, I wanna state, I'm not anti-wind, or I'm not for wind either. But I've had the chance to read the proposed ordinance over. There's a couple things I don't like. You don't have a height restriction. I don't like that. It's not, how do I put it in words? I strongly think that the, and please forgive me anti-wind people, I think what they're asking for, the 300, I don't think that's enough. But I think there needs to be a set height limit. And the other thing that I don't like that I read on is you have it 1.5 to a non-participating property line, which you've only got a 1.1 from a road. I personally think that the road is more, how do I put it? Being further away from the road is more important than being further from an anti-property, I mean, anti-wind property line. That's the two things that really stuck in my thought. Thank you.
Hello, Dan Shepherds, I own land over Winfield Lake. I just wonder, I'm gonna ask a question and I know you can't answer it here, but you can ask yourselves. This proposal that's on the table here, if we had started looking at what we were gonna do with Winfield Township before the money came to town, is that the same thing that you have on the plate, that? And if it's not, you still have time, you're right, Chris.
I'm Brian, Winfield Township. I wanted to be with Steve on the setback in the roads and also we do need a maximum height of something. I mean, I think it's very irresponsible to not have some kind of a maximum height. We could argue all day long what that should be, but there has to be some kind of a maximum height here somewhere. You know, who knows, technology down the road might come up with a 10,000-foot tower. But the main point I wanted to make is in the decommissioning, only requiring four feet of the concrete can be removed. I think that's irresponsible, that future use of the land, trying to work across and down the road. I think all the concrete needs to be removed, especially more than four feet, at least eight to 10 feet, because if somebody wants to build a powerful basement on there, they're gonna be stuck, they can't build, they're gonna be forced to remove the concrete themselves. I think decommissioning needs to be completely decommissioned, put the land back where it was. That's my main point. Thank you.
Dave Wires, Winfield Township. I've been attending these meetings on a regular basis, talking in front of you guys on a regular basis, making proposals, as many of us have, heights, setbacks, all those different types of things we've been talking about. I don't know that you've made any adjustments to the ordinance, very little. You made a couple, right? You're not listening. And that's the problem that I actually have about the whole thing. If you guys are willing to sit at the table and listen to the people, we'll be willing to work and talk to you about some stuff, but it doesn't seem like it's all about you and it's about nobody else. So that, for me, that's difficult to receive. And, you know, Mitch was right, as you create the ordinance that, you know, it's really, it's really in favor, I would say, of, you know, of the people that own the land so that they can get additional windows on their properties, but it's not for the rest of the township. You need to think about all the rest of the people in the township when you're thinking about an ordinance. It doesn't just impact those that own that property, it owns all the other people that live in our community. And there's a lot more people that live in our community than what will be living directly around the windmills. So it's quite important to make sure you listen. We do have a lot of people that are, would potentially sign for referendum, if that's necessary. We'd rather have you just sit at the table and go, okay, guys, that's not going to work. How are we gonna work with you so we can get something that the township will receive? Thank you.
Kelly Johnson, Douglas Township. They were just talking about the decommissioning. Well, earlier today, I heard that the pipelines are gonna be decommissioned. So if they were to start tearing up people's yards, driveways, fields, other houses, are these guys gonna be willing to let that all go when they start to decommission the pipes? I know they're gonna leave the pipes underground, but if these people wanna raise a fuss about the pipeline, then they can raise a fuss about the pipeline and have them decommissioned also. And I guess I'd like to see how many people complain when their front yards are all ripped out all summer long. So just so they can return it back to the way it was. So, thank you.
Decommissioning and that would fix the yards when it's done?
Oscar Quagell, Cato Township, November 4th, 2019. Based on our knowledge, our knowledge of the community and conversations we've had with our neighbors, we believe there will be a high degree of participation in this area once the final terms with Apex are set. Sincerely, Chris Rades. That was 2019, I'm pretty sure it's 2022 right now. I'm just curious if you have personally had the opportunity to go out and talk to your neighbors about this wonderful project. Because if this is something that you guys are willing to sign up for, you should be able to proudly bring it to your neighbors and say, hey, look at what's coming to our neighborhood. Isn't it gonna be great? You should be ecstatic about telling everybody. That's it.
Okay, I'm gonna start about where I? Pam Harris, Macon Township. I'm gonna continue with this letter from the doctor. Another, he was talking about things that are harmful to people, animals. Another is the wind farms being pushed all around the country. Yeah, it's not just here, it's all around the country and world. In both cases, farmers are being misled to believe that these projects are good for the environment and safe for local citizens. It's not just farmers, it's landowners in general. Neither is true. Whether it's the CO2 pipeline or the wind farm, the companies get 50% plus one of the landowners to sign onto a project. They can legally implement eminent domain and arbitrarily take your land for the project. Pretty interesting for all those conservative landowners who contend to be small government, independent rights, cut taxes advocates. But of course, they are the ones receiving the largest USDA welfare checks and stand to receive the biggest wind farm welfare payments also. For an overview of the wind farm collection, see Tucker Carlson's 30 Minutes special on wind farms. Some landowners just don't care because they only see the welfare check coming to them. Yes, I said welfare check, because over 75% of the funding for these projects is taxpayer money via grants, direct subsidies, tax credits, and guaranteed loans. These folks care not that the wind tower disturbs the neighbor's sleep, his animals, and establishes stray current flow in the earth, kills wildlife, eventually ends up in a landfill and leaves huge concrete monuments in the landscape. It is ironic that these same people lobbying for the windmills, I'm gonna say wind turbines, complain vehemently about welfare payments going to the poor. We have seen blatant political corruption in DC, yet our experience of local township and county corruption has been no less. Fortunately, people are doing their homework, as evidenced by the recall mandates in three townships of Macon County, and that is a good place to start. Now, I'm gonna say for myself, I think he's right on with the fear. I think everybody has a fear of lack. And when we call it greed, I don't think you've been greedy in the past about things, but I think you want the money, and I think in that she should because people are afraid you won't have enough. We all have that, we all have that concern at different times in our lives. I don't think you're bad people, but I don't think what you're doing here is fair. I don't think it's good for the community. And I also wanted to mention just a couple of things until my three minutes is up. That it was brought up by someone that, why spend the money for a lawyer when you?
Time's up, man. Sorry.
I could've just used pine root.
Yeah, my time.
And that's a cutting piece, I'm sure.
No, she's gone, sorry.
I'm Jessica Horn, Winfield Township. A lot of us here are being referred to as anti-wind. I am not anti-wind, I am pro-township. And I stood back from the VMA and looked and saw that Apex came into our township and perfectly conflicted our officials to start with. They got our conflicted officials to hire an attorney that represents public utilities. I do not feel that Mr. Omera is representing the best interests of our township. And when I look through this ordinance, I see it over and over. And I'm wondering how many of you actually went through the ordinance along with our zoning ordinance? Because if you did, you will see several things that need to be changed in here. The first is Section 5.03. In our zoning ordinance, M, L, and M both reference when those amendments were added. And I think that should continue to be included. That should also be added to the wind energy and met towers. If and when we amend, that date should be put in there. That makes it easier years down the road to knowing these things happen. If you looked at it in comparison, you will see that if we continue to use this as BB, wind energy facilities, you have wiped out all the regulations that go with farm mills because that is BB. So this should be WW. I questioned under the definition of habitable infrastructure, does that include a barn that houses animals? Because I believe it has been proven that this affects animals as it does humans. And I think that definition should be looked at more closely. Number eight, under two. We say that at the township's request, an environmental assessment can be asked for. I would suggest that it be required at the beginning. Right now, we are relying on this planning commission to make that recommendation and request. And the majority of you are conflicted. Are you going to ask for that environmental study? We are worried about the birds, the eagles, that are in the migratory path. And this should be a requirement. Not only that, this is going to be in effect for years down the road when we have different planning commission members and we have a different owner other than Apex. So we need to be thorough. The ice detection. So here again, we have a lack of communication. I'm asking you to extend it so we can go through some of these things. It's not like I'm repeating myself or going on and on. So there's gonna be no communication.
Kevin Murphy, Winfield Township, he's probably sick of all of us. I think we're wasting our time. You're not listening, you won't allow anybody to explain what she has done, the homework she's done is 100%. Let's all leave, let them friggin' do what they want, because they're gonna do it. Aren't you? You've got your minds made up? It's ridiculous. Are you green with your drugs, Ben? Hell no. Do you wanna make it go as fast as you can, as loud as you can and all that? You're gonna go battery powered, do all that? You're not worried about the environment, you're not going green. You know that. Thank you.
Corrupt board.
Crystal Cato Township, you need 350-foot tip limits.
Regal!
You need a mile and a half back from a lake stream river creek brook. You need 45 DBA L-max. And you need a 3,000-foot setback from any house. You need to do your homework and you need to get it done right.
That's right.
I'm Linda Reynolds, I'm from Douglas. I've watched a lot of body language up here. There's been certain times, here's a few of you that are really taking it to heart and you're listening to people. That's wonderful. The last meeting you had, I was here, I'm from this area, and the gentleman down here said, the way it's written, it's going to be referendum. About every area that you've put in here is pretty much off from Grandship over to Pine River, I believe, Acapulco, Pace, it's gonna be referendum. And I went to the Lethal Valley's public hearing. It was addressed about the eagle's end. They asked, the community asked, would you please put on the ADN radar detection system? That will help prevent that. They put it into their ordinance. Kyle tried to explain it with a feathering on the blades that helps it. Wrong answer, Kyle, that goes for keeping it wired, has nothing to do with birds. But you can still add that in as a help, to help your community. They want something from you guys. And the ones that's paying attention, they're fully counting on you. Please, listen to them, or it's gonna end up, you're gonna be back here starting all over again.
Anybody else?
Would it make a difference?
Hey, do you guys listen at all?
Joe Hasson, Sidney Township. Been to a lot of meetings. None of you guys listened to anybody. None of you guys really care, because you're all conflicting. You wanna make your money. It's too bad. Throw people under the bus just because you wanna make a little extra money. You ever think about the infrasound, the health effects of infrasound? Do you realize other countries use infrasound as an act of war? You ever study it? You ever wonder why these companies are getting sued by people getting sick from turbines? From the infrasound? Guys ever realize it? You ever do any research on it? Obviously not, because you're worried about lining your pockets. Infrasound's a serious issue. It affects the inner ear, affects people more with waves than others. Makes people sick, causes nausea, causes vertigo, causes a lot of health effects. A lot of these companies, big wind companies, are getting sued. Do a little research, you'll realize it. These people are winning. Big companies paying them off. Of course, they gotta throw a gag order in there and say why they pay them off or... It's just ridiculous. You people are ridiculous. You gotta do a little research. Infrasound is a very serious issue. Guys don't realize it. It causes sickness, causes health issues. Yeah, some people don't affect, other people does. It affects animals, affects humans. You know worms don't even stay in the ground because of turbines. Migratory birds won't nest around turbines anymore. Bats are getting killed, eagles are getting killed, bees are getting killed. We need bees. If we don't have bees, we're not gonna have any plants. We don't have bats, we're gonna have a lot of bugs. It's mad of you guys. Think about it. Do a little research. It's not hard to do. Quit listening to this big wind company, they're just a bunch of traveling salesmen pushing this big green agenda that causes more carbon fuel to build than what it'd be just to have a coal plant. This green energy is just a big joke. Solar and turbines, the mining company is booming because of it. You realize that? A little research, you'd realize that. But no, you'd rather just look at that contract you got with that money you're gonna get and screw your neighbor, because you don't care, we'll throw a turbine in there. Because I want that money and my neighbor's gonna suffer. Well, you guys are something else. I'll tell you that.
Hi, I'm Kathy, I'm from Winfield Township. We all work during the day, you guys do too. We're sick of coming to these meetings, I wish we didn't have to. I kinda feel like I can't miss a meeting, because I feel like my home is at stake, my community's at stake. But if you don't pass a safe ordinance, we're gonna keep doing this and doing this and doing this. I for one will be out getting petitions for referendum, and I know that everybody out here will too. So do a safe ordinance, you're wasting all of our time if we have to do this again. Because I will be the first one signing up to get petitions and names. I'll take a week's vacation to go knock on every door in this township to make sure they understand what it is we're doing. So I hope you're thinking and listening to us, because we are planning to referendum whatever garbage you put out there.
Heidi Eaves, Winfield Township. October, the 1st of October of 2021, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. I had just moved to Winfield Township. And all of this broke out. I've gone through three surgeries. My last one was just two thirds, two Thursdays ago. I'm here today with a pump on me, because this is important to me. I do not appreciate it when my neighbors,
What's annoying?
who have stand to make money off of things that they're going to make decisions on a board that I helped vote them in. You guys are voting for me. You are making decisions for me. And I voted for you. And I don't appreciate it, that you are making me come here after having a bilateral mastectomy to state an opinion, because you will not listen, time after time after time. And just like Kathy Pop said, I will be back here again. And I will, now I will go and get all of the people to stand with me, if you will not listen.
What a class act.
Ken Loon, Winfield Township. I was just wondering why this map identifies my property as a wind energy utility area? As far as I can tell, my property's been more than seven years as rural residential. That's a good question. Why is this map so outdated? The second question is, why are we not following Robert's rules? If a person spends their three minutes and they have more, after everyone else is done, they can have another three minutes. Robert's rule.
I'm Tony Bennett, I live on Omni Road, in Winfield Township. Just a little levity. I don't know if you guys ever thought about this before, but I can see it in the future. These rusting hulks are up there, this is maybe in 2080, and people are looking at it. And they're gonna say, you know, they put these things all through white America. It's racist, because they don't put any of these in the law. It's racist, because they don't put any of these in the black neighborhoods, and they don't put them in the Chinese neighborhoods or whatever, they don't put them in the big metropolitan areas. They just put them right through white America, and it looks like a big friggin' mess now." Just think about that.
Just a super quick one. Sheila Crump, Douglas Township. They don't put them in wealthy neighborhoods either. And just a quick reminder that the Douglas Township attorney, who a lot of attorneys will tell you they can't defend low height limits, passed 150-foot height limit on the board in his own township, where he is on the board, where he says they are in a migratory area. I've seen thousands of geese in, not just around lakes, but wheat fields around here. So that's all I have.
Anybody else?
I guess I might as well get in trouble again.
Your time, if you already talked once, sir. This gentleman behind you is gonna talk.
He can't wait. I've been coming to a few different meetings, and I've been watching this for a little while now.
Name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jacob Myers, Winfield Township on Bailey Road. I did own, I own property on Bailey Road. I did own a property in Indian Lake that I sold a year or two ago. So been watching this for a little while now. And I have a lot of questions and a lot of problems. And it's taken, you know, it took me a long time to go through all of them, but my biggest concern with windmills in the area is the eyesore, first and foremost for me. Very tall, you drive through windmill areas, it's a big eyesore, just ruining the whole county, you know, by putting them up there. The lights at night, big problem. I know there's talk about the, I think that just completely destroys the skyline, when you have blinking red lights at night. And it's across the whole skyline. It's not like just one radio tower or cell tower, it's, they're across the whole skyline. I don't want, I don't want the area of this county ruined that way. Now, I know there's talk about the aircraft, you know, sensors and how that works. I'm not even sure how that works. I've come to a couple of these meetings, you've talked about, I've never heard anyone actually explain how much that actually reduces the amount of lights. They say, "Oh, that'll..."